Okay, I would like to call this joint meeting of the Lakewood City Council and Lakewood Board of Education. It's, we were due to start at 6:00. I think we're still waiting for Mr. O'Malley. But also, in the interest of everyone's time, I hate to wait too much longer. If it's all right with council, to go ahead. And Ms. Kepel. So, thank you. We can at least start our, start our meeting. So there will be a call to order for each body. So, Mr. Zeeman?
Ms. Shawnessy?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Peter Barcelona?
Here.
Ms. Katzenberger?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And would Lakewood City Council need to do the same?
Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Rader?
Here.
Councilman Chackner?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
I'm gonna wait a second. Councilmember Litten, here. Councilmember Kepel? Are you here?
Yeah.
And President O'Malley will be here shortly.
Great. Then if you would join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a good, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, thank you all for coming. These, oh, Mr. O'Malley, thank you for coming, all of you. I didn't mean that, like it sounded. It was coming out of my mouth, like, I'm snarky.
It's like my teachers when I was in school, like, oh, thanks for showing up.
No, 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 no. We very much appreciate it. We just thought we'd dispense with roll calls, sort of thing. So this is just an opportunity to, for us to share information. I think it's always helpful to actually do it face to face, and we can all see our faces now. And share some topics that are of mutual interest. There are many. So I would just welcome you all. Mr. O'Malley, could you give me?
Well, thank you, President Shawnessy, and it's, I totally agree. I think, I think with COVID, we sort of got out of the habit of having these joint meetings, and we should make sure that we do this at least annually. I think it is a really good opportunity for us to come together and talk about ways that the school district and the city can be the partners that we need to be for our mutual constituents and the people that we serve. So, and then thanks for hosting us here tonight.
Well, thank you. So we have topics of mutual interest, and we'll try to adjourn then upon completion of that. I just, at the start, I'll just say that in the past, we have not had, this has been a sharing of information between the city and the board. We've not had public comment, our questions. Those are, you know, I know, you get plenty at council. We love to hear what the public wants to talk to us about at our board meetings. So unless there's an urgent matter, I would, we would stick to that same format that we've had in the past, unless you feel differently.
Well, I thought, I thought we did have public comment at previous joint meetings, but I may be misremembering that, so.
Can we check back, and we have an special?
Okay.
But, I mean, if there was a matter, never say never, I know. So, but it's a good time to start. And I think it looks like the topics have been kind of mixed up. I don't know, Superintendent Nitzwicky and the mayor, if you want to introduce people that are here as well before we get started?
Sure. So, my last is Director of Planning and Development, Sean Lineger. Sean is the co- president next to me, so if you will, out of all the wonderful directors, because he's got a great presentation here, on the Safe Routes to School program, as well as the foster pool renovations. And then members of the administration, Chief Dunkey, Chief Kowchak, Chief DeSori, Finance Director Peter Raybommer, Law Director Brian Gordon, Tony Joseph, the Services Director, are all here in support of the administration of the city. And obviously, we're here to discuss items pertinent to their departments as well as both of us.
Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone here to Garfield School. Superintendent Nitzwicky?
Sure. Good evening. Tonight, we have our Director of Operations sitting in the front, Mr. Donahoe. We have our Communications Coordinator, Christine Gordillo, with us. We have Leslie Faber, Progman, with us today, Recreation Coordinator. We have Stephen Os with us, Director of Teaching and Learning. And that's all I'm seeing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So our first topic is Safe Roots to School Initiative.
We'll turn it over to Director Lineger.
That'd be great. I know this has been recorded for school and city councils.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Good evening, members of council. Sean Lineger, Director of Planning and Development for the city. So, I believe Councilor Buck had passed out this presentation, so I'm going to be referring a lot when we talk about Safe Routes to School, and we talk about foster pool, to, to these slides that are on here. So the Safe Routes to School is really covered on pages one, two, and the top of three. And so, in case you're not aware, the city is in the process of applying for Safe Routes to School funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And before I explain what that is, let me back up and explain what we've been doing and what's been leading us to that, to that effort. So over the last number of years, we've made a number of active living improvements. So active living is walking, biking, running, throughout our community. That's been with the bike lanes that are on Lake Avenue. That's been with sharrows on Detroit Avenue. Franklin Avenue also has had bike lanes installed, and a number of other improvements, including work with the metro parks on bringing the Valley Parkway out of the Rocky River Reservation onto Detroit Avenue. We also then have a number of other initiatives that we're currently working on with a number of partners in our, in the region. And those are laid out on the slide on the second page, yeah, the second page. Hilliard Road is due for some major improvements with the bridge replacement that's being planned by the county. We have our own project to replace, to resurface the road and add bike lanes. We're also now working with the county. There's some press on this over the weekend with the Lake Clifton Bridge, and some improvements that are, or some planning efforts that have been going on there. Again, working with the metro parks on the riverside. But all this is culminating into, we have a pretty big initiative to update our 2012 bicycle plan. As part of that, and recognizing that really the city is, the city is the densest city in Ohio. We are walkable. We have two major commercial quarters that run through our community. All of our students, our school age students, either get to school by foot, by bike, or by car. A really good, a really good place to start that update of that bicycle plan. And when we talk about active transportation and thinking about it holistically, instead of just about bicycles, is through the Safe Routes to School program funding. And so, we are putting together an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for Safe Routes to School. Ultimately, what that will do is it'll provide resources for technical assistance, for project funding, and then ultimately to encourage and enable students K through eight to walk and, to walk, bike, and get to school safely. Funding will ultimately, once we have, once we have a school travel plan, will ultimately allow us to make infrastructure improvements, as well as to make non-infrastructure programs available. That can include education programs, that could include bike helmets, a number of things that aren't just infrastructure related. The first step in that, and that's the last slide pertaining to Safe Routes to School, is to develop a school travel plan. And that's really what our request is for, it's for funding to develop a school travel plan. That's a prerequisite to get any type of funding. It's also where we started. In 2011, we were one of the first cities in the entire state to receive Safe Routes to School funding. However, our, our application was limited at that time. It was only for Garfield and Harding Middle Schools. Obviously, we have many, many more schools in our, in our community, spread throughout our entire community, and so we want to focus on, on all of those. And with that, we will do a comprehensive analysis of a number of different demographics in the community, our, our travel routes to and from school. And you can see even as part of the, as part of the initial submittal, we're already taking a look at some of that data, those data points, working with the school district to get some, some student information. So we can start to lay out where students are traveling from, how they're traveling to, our various schools throughout the community. And that's both on the private side and on the public side. So with that, the application's due, I think it's the end of this week. We should get some information here in the beginning of June, and we'll, we'll kick that offer off once we receive word from, from ODOT. But regardless, that's a starting point for us, but it's, we will be updating our bicycle plan this year.
What structural improvements are you, are you thinking? Can you be a little more specific?
It's infrastructure improvements?
Yes.
So this could be anything from, if we don't have countdown timers at intersections. It could be places where we don't have crosswalks currently, but there's an intersection, but not a crosswalk there. How can we make those crosswalk improvements so kids don't have to walk all the way multiple blocks to cross the street and then come back down? It could be a whole range of, of things.
Any other questions, or?
Question about some of the infrastructure improvement methods. So, I'm not as familiar with the Safe Routes to School program or what, you know, the, kind of what the manuals allow for, but raised crossings, right? So particularly in school zone areas. And what I mean by that is when you're pedestrian, rather than going down to street level, you would stay at pedestrian level, and it essentially would be a speed bump for traffic. Is that one treatment that could be used there?
I don't know of any restrictions on the different treatments that the state would, would prohibit us from considering. I think everything's on the table. Now, the state has recently come out with some new, I forget what the term they're using, but there's some design guidance that the, the state is now using for implementations of, implementation of active transportation elements. So there might be some guidance there that'll tell us when and where we can't use that type of treatment, but I'm not aware of anything that would, that would prohibit us from, from considering those types of applications in the community.
Yeah, 'cause I think, I think both raised crosswalks and particularly in areas of high kid traffic, right? Elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school. And then bringing the crosswalks closer, pinching the road, right? So the curb length, so the cross, so as a pedestrian, you have to cross less feet, right? So those are things, I think, in certain areas, right, like we designed for truck traffic or car traffic, certain routes aren't truck routes, so you don't need a 40-foot opening, right? So just one thing to consider.
Councilman Baker, to your point, the only thing that might be requisite on us is when, when we talk about traffic calming, there are certain warrants that have to be met to a, to a certain level. So it depends on how they view the raised crosswalk, if they view it as, as a speed calming device or just a pedestrian warning device. There's probably a little bit of, a little bit of nomenclature in there, too, but.
Yeah, two birds, one stone.
Yeah.
What would, I have a question. What would be an example of a non-structural improvement?
So it can be educational programs about how to safely cross a crosswalk. Sometimes we've seen other cities do bike helmet giveaways for those, if you ride your bike to school, they will give you a bike helmet. It can be, it's, generally, it's all centered around the idea of safety, pedestrian safety. Could even touch the drivers, too, some educational behavior, or educational material for, for drivers, because they have to be just as careful as the pedestrians do crossing the street, and how we manage those, those vehicles coming to and from the school.
I'm not sure who to ask.
Go ahead, we can be colloquial.
You're president.
We can be colloquial here.
Okay. Director Lineger, thanks for this work. I have a couple of questions. One is, is the methodology akin to, like, the ADA transition plan? Would a consultant review the areas, and, and would the, would ADA be taken into consideration also?
So to the first question, yes, the consultant would go through a methodology, and how, how the consultant selected in this point, in this, in this case, to see we requested ODOT assign a consultant to this. So they have a host of consultants that are already pre-qualified for this program. The main one that uses is a company called Tool Design, based out of Columbus. They're one of the leaders in this, in this industry, actually. But yes, they would come in, they would do an analysis of all of our data, they would do a physical analysis of all the different routes that they see, and then help us arrive at a plan. To what level that reaches ADA review, that I don't know. That is something I would have to get back to you with an answer on.
Great, thanks. And then another question. Would that involve consideration of crossing guards? Maybe that's a Chief Kowchak question, but is that part of, is that considered in with the plan, or is it more? I know you said it's not just.
Certainly something we can, we can, that can be explored and considered as we're, where we look at our, how our crossing guards are placed throughout the city. Perhaps there's, there's, there may be a way to redeploy them, or consider moving somewhere out to be more effective.
And then, how is that, how, if at all, is it considered with the non-public schools in Lakewood? And how does that, for instance, at Emerson, I know, I actually, I teach a class here on Thursdays, and when I go through the traffic at Emerson, making the turn and trying, you know, and St. Ed's is getting out, and I know we've had some emails about that. So is that part of this? How is that considered?
So St. Ed's is not, because St. Ed's is above eighth grade. However, we're sitting at this school, which is within, and we're looking at this, in this map, we're looking at one mile and two mile radiuses from every school. So we're actually crossing many boundaries many, many times over each school district. So even though St. Ed's may not be part of this, it's being analyzed through, through all the other schools that are being impacted. We have reached out to the, to the private schools, the parochial schools in the community, and asset that participates, LCA is participating. I think everybody, to the, for the most part, has. There was one school, there was one school, the name's escaping me. They just have such a small student population that they, and some of this requires some data sharing. Not anything specific data, but just address of, of where the students coming from. But a lot of their students were coming from outside of Lakewood, so they're not participating. But again, they'll, they'll all be analyzed because our, the geometry of, of one mile, two mile circles of, over a dozen schools is going to cover the city many times over.
So but the, sorry, that's my, probably last one. So the, but the traffic, for instance, from St. Ed's, even though St. Ed's wouldn't be considered as part of getting St. Ed's students to school, the traffic coming from them, for instance, would be?
Still considered, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President, unless I'm jumping in front of a school board member, wouldn't want to do that since we're your guests. Thanks, Mr. Lineger, and thank you, School Board President Shawnessy, and everyone for your hospitality. And I hope we do this annually again. The interest, I think, we're hearing across both bodies is significant. I'm, first of all, want to compliment the administration, the mayor. It's, it's very important work. It's great that we're going to update what has been a really broadly supported bicycle plan that's 10 years or more in the making and in the practice. I recall we had data that began that plan. I'm wondering if we've got plans to survey? I'm wondering if we've got plans to survey usage of bike lanes and, and walking and all the rest, and if we need support from interns, maybe we know somebody who can have a learning project that we could involve people in. But that, I remember, was a pleasant surprise. We felt, we learned that Lakewood had a lot of people who both walked and biked. It put us right at the top of, of the state. I quite honestly haven't had a lot of time to think about those numbers in recent years. But for sure, if we're going to update and broaden a bicycle plan and an active living initiative, I think that would be wonderful if, if we can work out the capacity to do it. Is there opportunity, or are you under a tight timeline, to incorporate and capture some of this feedback from the school board members and the council members into the application for the safe school travel plan?
So we have time. Right now, this is the first, this is the first step in the overall active transportation plan. This isn't the last step.
Okay.
This is going to help feed a lot of data into that, to that plan, to your point about user data, public surveys, et cetera. So there, there's still plenty of time.
I'm sure that a planner's, a professional planner's analysis is needed to, to, to provide shape to it. But everybody here has a neighborhood and knowledge of that intersection and that quirk at that light. We've got all these offset intersections in Lakewood.
And so as part of the Safe Routes to School and the development of the school travel plan, there will be captains through each school that'll be designated to help pull some of that information out from, from teachers, from, from staff, from, from students. There's parent involvement, there's public participation. So there's multiple layers of, of opportunity to provide that, that, that anecdotal information that we don't have as planners looking and just plugging data into maps and other things. So there, there's plenty of opportunity to pull that type of information out.
Thank you. And then for, you know, educating me on the school side, I know that the principals and the teaching staff do a superb job once we have kids and parents incoming to the school campus. And maybe even the crossing guards kind of be on, although the city coordinates and hires and pays the crossing guards. What kind of inputs or, or expertise has the school, schools personnel provided? Or are there more opportunities you'd like to get in? Because we've got this curious, this is going to be a theme tonight, I think, the city and the schools interfacing, and we want it to be lockstep or, or really complimentary, but at times in the handoff, there could be gaps. So are there insights that the schools have that we ought to capture when we're doing this planning? I imagine there, there would be.
Absolutely. I know, I believe Dr. Plumbos sits on the committee right now, our assistant superintendent, just to get the, the grant up and running. And then after that, the input from different surveys or community in-person or Zoom meetings will certainly be beneficial to all of us because at that time, we'll be able to provide all that information to you. This is, this is really a great opportunity for us as we, we've been able to see just with the amount of snow that hit this winter. It's not always like that, but it does get very tight here in Lakewood when it comes to traveling around and walking students. And so it's important for us to be abreast of these situations and how we can mitigate any, you know, potential travesties from occurring. So we appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thanks for the smart.
I just have a quick question on kind of the timeline. So is there an opportunity, are we working now together so that when we get a, like a letter from a parent saying, "I'm concerned about the crossing situation for any school," you know, and I'm sure you get them as well, then do we have a mechanism for sharing that information with you? I'm not, I'm just, that's what, that's what we seem to be working towards, is that kind of timely communication?
That mechanism may exist. However, as a planning director, I typically wouldn't receive that. That would probably flow either to our chief of police or to our public works department, depending on what the issue is. And if it's not, then yes, this is an opportunity to create that. I, sometimes I've seen a couple of things in my year and a half with the city. I've seen things come across my email. But if you're receiving those, please hold those, hang on to those, because we'll, we'll probably be knocking, looking for them at some point.
I think if there's like, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to add to that to say that I think if we're talking about more of a long-term structural changes that, in the vein of what Sean's talked about here today, you know, I think talking to his department, but we're talking about more of an immediate concern. You know, the Chief Cowcheck and the Police Department oversee the school crossing guards. And I, I'm sure that the mayor's office would be happy to, to handle any issues as well.
Mr. Kline, did you?
Thank you. I, I just felt it was an appropriate time to recognize the work of, of city officials just this past school year to address concerns brought up by a group of, I believe, Emerson parents about a specific intersection. Response was, was rather swift with the addition of a, of a crossing guard. So we certainly appreciate that. And then Councilman Litton and I are, are in possession of a, of a correspondence today, just in regard to a specific intersection. So more communication on that probably forthcoming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President O'Malley, is snow removal your topic?
That's the next item, and I'll defer to the mayor as to how she might like to address this topic. Let me just start by saying that, of course, we've had two pretty significant snowstorms already this year. One was more anticipated than the other. But I know that, you know, certainly our public works department was firing on all cylinders as far as I could, I could tell. Of course, Lakewood, as the school board's well aware, is one of just, I think, two or three districts in the state where we don't have school buses and a lot of kids walk to school. And so the mayor has recently introduced a proposal to streamline and modernize some of the ordinance that we have related to her powers as safety director and how we clear that. But certainly turn it over to her to address it.
Thank you. And I, I don't have any formal, anything formal prepared, but just in general about smoke, uh, snow removal. As Councilman O'Malley mentioned, we had two substantial snow events, about 12 inches each, in the month of January after a very low prior couple of years. So our public works is charged with managing snow operations. It falls under our Streets and Forestry Division. In the winter months, we have three shifts operating, and so they're operating 24/7 and worked very hard to remove the snow, some working 12 and 16-hour shifts to make sure that the, the snow was clear. However, this was actually a topic of mine that I started discussing very early on in my tenure. It's all actually been a, a passion of mine, if you will, snow removal. And due to COVID and some other things, I really didn't have the opportunity to really dive deep down into it and what we were doing operationally. So we just kind of kept it as-is. But now I have actually Sean, and you can see how thorough he is from his presentation, charged with leading an internal team diving into all aspects and all operations of snow removal. So from how many people we have on shift, who's in charge of the snow removal process, what does our code look like? So Councilman O'Malley referenced, we're updating one piece of our code identified that we didn't have clear language around when is an emergency. You know, is it automatic? Is it not? So we're updating that, that legislation. Also, Councilwoman Kepel and Schachner have introduced a communication to talk more about this. So I'm looking forward to partnering with council. But the end result and the goal is to have a procedures document that we can put on the city's website and that internal teams can reference and say, "This is what our procedure is for snow removal." And I'll, I'll, I'll name one thing that we've beginning to establish. Our Streets and Forestry Division Manager, he has historically been responsible for making sure the Streets and Forestry Department has enough employees out, snow applying the streets. However, other division managers are tasked with getting at municipal lots, making sure those are clear. We try to plow the sidewalk around Lakewood High School. Another division refuse does that. It really didn't make sense to have different division managers managing different parts of snow operations. So moving forward, he's going to be charged with that, so he can use the full resources of the public works department to make sure that we have the appropriate personnel where they need to be. So that's one change that we implemented, which I think we saw from the second snow, uh, snowstorm worked a lot better. So that's all I have on snow removal for now. More to come. Looking forward to getting that document up so the public can view it. We still have a couple more internal meetings because, again, we want to take a really deep dive and capture everything to make sure this is a very comprehensive procedure manual.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Councilman.
Well, no questions, just more of a comment. They made you questions over there.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, certainly, yeah, we've been really lucky the past few years that the weather's been pretty gracious all in all. One thing I was wondering is, I realize, I realize the decisions and ultimately what's in writing will be downstream once, once this can be looked at. But I guess, is this intended to be for internal purposes for the city or is this also going to be guidance? When I think about so many of our neighborhoods, especially around schools, like the treelons barely exist. So when it comes down to it, the road snow ends up on the sidewalk snow and vice versa. Are there going to be some, I don't know whether it's going to be best practices or ideas on just how to navigate these sort of snow events so that we still can safely both use the roads and the sidewalks? Sure. So it'll be both an internal reference guide, but also something that the public can view as well. What is my responsibility in terms of my sidewalk? So to answer your question, yes, it should help provide some guidance to community members to remind them what their responsibilities are. And that's actually some of the legislation that Councilman Schachner and Councilwoman Kepel proposed with making sure we're clarifying, you know, the public versus the, the public residence versus the city's responsibility in terms of snow removal.
I think, thank you, Mayor George. I think it's a great initiative. As anybody who's been talking to anybody in the last month, it's a topic of much public interest. One of the things that I, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to take a deep dive into it, you know, to develop better guidelines. And one of the things that I want to make sure is on your guys' radar screen is knowing the drop-off, pickup, recommended drop-off pickup, or not necessarily recommended, the required drop-off pickup procedures at each of the schools. Because some of them changed once we had the new buildings. They were designed a certain way for the buildings. But then as they were, you know, Grant is a great example. It was originally supposed to, you're supposed to pull through the parking lot and back out onto, instead of, now they go out in Victoria, which is a very narrow street. During a snow time when there's parking on the street, it's pretty challenging for people to get down that street. And then you also have, you know, I know, like, for example, horseman, some of the walker paths on Webb, the corners might not fall under any residence, snow, sidewalk clearing responsibilities. And so the thing you worry about with any of these things is kids walking in the street. So, you know, in Harding, one of their, the drop-off point for the seventh graders is in front of the school on Madison instead of around the back of the school. So then, street might be clear, the sidewalk might be clear, but there might be snow in between. So just, I think as you guys are, it's a great follow-up to the school safety, you know, Safe Walk to School program because, you know, even it's, as superintendent, as Wicky said, you would hate to, we want to do everything we can to avoid any sort of terrible consequences, so.
Just the fact that the, the, the safe travel to school and this, this, the context of the snow removal itself fit together nicely. And I'm hoping that, you know, the, the plan, when it's developed, includes those things. And I back up what Scottzenberger said about the, the fact that the difficulty is curb cuts. It's getting from crosswalks over the snow to the school that's pushing kids to walk in the street. It's also, of course, parents dropping children off across the street and expecting them to run across. And that's another enforcement issue. But anyway, I appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just as a practical matter, too, I don't know if our public works director's here today, but he did inform me that I think somewhere in the neighborhood of six or seven of our plow drivers are brand-new this year. And so, you know, I tried to adjust my patients based on that information. But they were very responsive. I mean, there were plenty of times where, and I'm sure I speak for other council members, when we would have a residence, you know, call with, "Hey, this was missed," or, you know, "This wasn't done properly." And we just got that message to the public works department, and they were on it right away. So certainly would, you know, if there are any issues that you're aware of, would certainly welcome you to get in touch with us. And like I said, I, I think I speak for other council members when I say that they were very responsive and when we were, brought those issues to their attention. Councilman Schachner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to give a little preview about the future Public Safety Committee meeting that will be discussing primarily sidewalks, snow removal, which is kind of a difficult topic because of all the intersecting responsibilities that do occur. For one, we do, would like to clarify for the public on whose responsibility is whose, especially those of us who live on corner houses, about how far you're supposed to shovel, like, to the crosswalk. You're, that's, you're supposed to do that. But on top of that, we also want to discuss some coordination between the building department and the police department because the responsibility in terms of the ordinance about keeping your sidewalks clear falls under the criminal code, which makes sense because if it was under the building code, what he could do is a correction notice. By the time a correction notice goes through to court, it's corrected because the snow has melted. It's not very helpful. So, but, but we can't reasonably believe that we're going to have our police officers patrolling the streets, siding every house that the sidewalk isn't clear. So the building department typically does get those calls. So the building department, just to talk about at the meeting and what policies we could implement, if not implemented already, about communication between the building department and the police department about what houses are problem houses necessarily. And also in terms of commercial and rental properties, do rent, should rental properties get a warning? Or should, if you're a landlord, should that, your warning be at the landlord training meeting? So that's a discussion to be had, and that will be had at the next Public Safety Committee on the topic.
Yeah, and if I can just follow up on that. So when we introduced this, too, is we were looking at, we, we certainly felt the shock from the community with these big snows. And part of the reason, and the mayor alluded to this, is I went back, you know, librarian. So I went back and looked at the data in 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 were two of our lowest snows in 20 years. And then December of 2021 was one of the heaviest snows in that 20-year period. So, or one of the lowest snows in that 20-year period also. So we went from two years of very low snow, one of the lowest months ever, one of the lowest Decembers of snow ever, to in January, we got about half the total amount of snow we got the previous year, all in one month. So when you felt that shock, that's why. Plus, everyone's dealing with, you know, all the leftover trauma of everything else that we've been dealing with. So we, we understand that. And so we're also being cognizant also of, we heard from a lot of folks who, seniors and folks with disabilities who don't have the capacity to clear their sidewalks themselves and may not have the financial means to hire someone else to do that. We also consult, we're inviting Lakewood Alive to that Public Safety meeting. Lakewood Alive does have that volunteer program. So if you feel like getting some exercise this winter or next week winter, please volunteer for them to help with that because they really do need volunteers. And recognize that one of the challenges is a lot of the commercial removal companies don't typically do sidewalks. They'll do the driveways and sometimes even pile the snow onto the sidewalk. So, so that's something we're looking at and as well, working with Lakewood Chamber to make sure. And they helped push out some messaging to our businesses to make sure businesses are aware of their responsibility for sidewalks. And to your point about the snow piling up, you know, the sidewalk might be clear, then there's a big hump, and then the street's clear and you can't get from one to the other. And part of that is just we're running, you know, we ran out of space to put snow. So we'll be looking at all that at Public Safety, but that's just some of all the components to the sidewalk aspect, which is a little tricky. So we're, we're going to be working on it.
We'll move on to district enrollment. Superintendent?
Oh, forgive me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, although that sounds like a call. The city recently, in the last five or four years, got some sidewalk snowplows. Have you done any good work on certain areas that matter a lot, but certainly not in the sidewalk everywhere? Is the school equipment for snow clearance included? You know, motorized equipment or whatever your methods might be, I'm sure the show is insulting traditional or both. But could there be opportunities that would help safely use the schools' plan? That maybe there could be some improvements with the walking snow removal elements that currently make it horrible? And I appreciate the fact that it sounds like our, our street clearance sometimes has some function.
Sure, absolutely. Director Donahue?
Sure, thank you for that question. I think I should be able to answer that. All of the schools are equipped with snow throwers, salt spreaders, staff to operate those. On any given situation, I initiate callouts, making sure that the equipment is functional, that it's staffed. We operate a plow crew out of our maintenance building on Cutant. And those plow operators will normally get ahead of the schools, they'll do the, the parking lots, and then the custodians will do the sidewalks. And they're very good at knowing what, how far they need to go. And they typically go beyond where they need to go. They, they understand fully that if a, a snow plow, whether it's a city-owned plow or a district-owned plow, i- if it piles up on an, on a crosswalk, that they know enough to clear that. And they have the means and the methods to do that. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think so. It's a focus that's very important on the job. And I also like to picture a clear and solid salt town.
Yeah.
And we agree that we're, we're, we're communicating or resuming communication and planning to send it to the other areas.
Sure, and we're always opening up to suggestions and, and new equipment. And I've had dialogue in the past with, with Roman regarding what toys out there are, you use that are successful. And we're, we have a good dialogue back and forth. Right now, I'm very comfortable with the, the equipment that the schools have. So, any questions from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Good job this year.
Absolutely. And you know, I do have to, you know, say, and I, I know you all received a lot of feedback about snow removal, and we did too. And I do have to say thank you to the city and our staff at Operations and Maintenance. You know, there were weekends over a hundred hours of extra work that was occurring. And as you stated, there, we have new people on plows, but we also have people that aren't filling in for these positions that we've had open through the year, you know, just like everyone else in the state of Ohio and the country. And so appreciate the people we have. We know we've been working some overtime and, and we certainly would be interested in some conversations around how we can continue to better ourselves when these types of situations occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Enrollment? Moving right along.
Moving right along. So I wanted to share some information we've been discussing with the board, Mr. Zeeman and I. Enrollment of the Lakewood City Schools. And interesting enough, our last enrollment study occurred in 2013. And so when we look back at 2013, we had 6,005 students. In 2022, we have 4,352 students. And so we are going to engage with another company to look at an enrollment study and rightsizing ourselves. When you have about, what is that, am I mis, 1,600 less students? What does that mean for effective building usage? What does that mean in staffing? We have 11 buildings that we have right now. We have our seven elementaries, we have our two middles, the high school, and our alternative program at Franklin School of Opportunity. And so what we're looking at is how we can be proactive and rightsizing ourselves when it comes to staffing and also managing our buildings and our costs fiscally. But doing it in a thoughtful way that we don't want to harm any of the programming or intervention or innovation that we foresee for the future for our students of Lakewood City. Because that is something that makes Lakewood City Schools so special to our families. So along with that study, we've also engaged our, that's what, another reason why we started with a strategic plan this year, looking at what's important for our families, our parents, our students. We, I've met with student groups to discuss that, what do we want out of those city schools? And what do we want to continue to encourage and to develop our students or the vision of our Lakewood graduate? But at the same time, be fiscally responsible to our constituents. So that is something that will be ongoing. We have not began that study yet, but we'll certainly, I know I meet with the mayor once a month, so I'll be sharing, continuing to share that information out with her as we continue to look at our enrollment. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Tris.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And this may be a little bit, I know all we can do really is the school district or cities react to the realities that we find ourselves in in terms of population. But knowing that the city has kind of held consistent since 2010, between 2010 and 2020 census, we did lose, what, 1,500 residents? Do you have any sense as to why the number of students would have decreased by that amount?
So in the country and overall in the state of Ohio, school enrollment is down to begin with. I come from a family of eight, I don't see many of those anymore. And so I think there's that. There's also, we did find that the top school, that the majority of our students that left us during the pandemic went to Cleveland. And so I, for me, I could surmise that it potentially could have been they were unable to afford their housing because they weren't going to other areas, they weren't going to a virtual school necessarily. And, and we did preempt that by starting our own to ensure that any of the families that want it virtual, we want to keep them here in Lakewood, we want them to engage in the extracurriculars that they're capable of doing here. And we, we offer what we feel is the best. And so we have about, we, we started with about 25 students this year, K to five, and we're down to about 15. But that still keeps 15 of our families engaged with us in the school system. The enrollment study would help us dig into that a little bit more and give us a better understanding.
What's the impact of school vouchers and charters on enrollment?
For Lakewood City Schools, actually, the, the voucher program hasn't impacted us as it has some of our neighboring districts or, you know, our sister city on the east side, Cleveland Heights University of Heights, of course, is challenged with that significantly.
They may be, I mean, next to Cleveland, the most impacted in the whole state.
Correct. One of the benefits, of course, is in Lakewood City Schools, all of our schools are highly rated.
Right.
So of course, there's less qualifying events for, for parents or community members to take advantage of those voucher programs. However, I will mention that House Bill 290, no, let's see. Yeah, 290, currently being discussed, it's called the Backpack Bill, which is universal vouchers. I definitely would recommend, and I know we are on our side, making sure that we're being advocates for public education as that, as those discussions continue. Just another note with the enrollment too, is demographically speaking, at our buildings, overall, the percentage change was consistent throughout our building. So it wasn't like one pocket lost more than another. And there's a little bit of variances because overall, it's about a 27% decrease, whereas some of our elementaries saw maybe a little higher, a little lower. But that study will actually help us determine our enrollment zones within Lakewood, for especially our elementaries, which I, which will also help with that Safe Routes to Schools program. Because again, understanding where the children are living and where they're going and how they're getting to school, I think will be very important.
Thank you. I have a friend who's a teacher in Solon who told me that you can get a voucher in Solon, one of the top school districts in the state of Ohio. I mean, exactly what need are we trying to satisfy by draining that kind of money out of our public school system? It just makes no sense to me. Last question that I have, and it's not about the larger issue of enrollment, but really more about, more of maybe an immediate issue. But I was on a call on Friday with Global Cleveland. And statistics that I know I've heard before is that a third of all refugees in Cuyahoga County live in Lakewood. And, you know, as I said, and I, I've had the good fortune of being invited to Harrison many, many times. And it is just incredible to look at a student assembly at that school. I mean, you're looking at a picture of America. And particularly, you know, as we are now possibly going to be seeing another influx of refugees with the situation in Eastern Europe. What, 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 first of all, do you know how many students in Lakewood schools either English is not their first language? Or, you know, what special programs are in place to accommodate students for whom that kind of acclamation is just more of an adjustment?
Sure, and you're having me go back in my file in my brain right now. It's not that great. But our programming is excellent. We have a great English language learner program pre-K to 12. In fact, we're looking at continuing to read research on language development and what that means for our students. So, so I, I feel very strongly that we can meet the needs of all students that come to Lakewood, and we look forward to doing that and continuing to do that. I want to say that, you know, I don't have the right number in my head. So I don't want to say how many students that we have right now. I know that we are capable of serving students. I've been in other districts. There's a test, the state testing of OTELA that's given, and some can only manage the lowest level of limited, you know, basic, limited, proficient, and then you have your emerging speakers. And, and a lot of schools aren't able to manage anything but that lowest level of proficiency at that time. And that doesn't mean a low learner, it just means their language development isn't there yet. And we have more staff that can adapt to also the students emerging into the languages and be able to provide extra assistance for them that way.
Thanks. I, I think one of the reasons that Lakewood is such a destination for refugees and new Americans is because of the success of the programs that the school district offers. They know that, you know, students are going to be accommodated and that the school district just seems really well-equipped.
This cafeteria is one example of that.
Yeah, I, I can tell.
You know, and we love to see them.
Yeah.
Just, just a comment, because one of the things that I've always been proud of as a member of this Board of Education, if you look at the children who come into this district, say, K4, you know, and I've seen kids in classrooms walk off the plane one day and be dropped off at, at one of our elementary schools the next day. And you think about how terrifying that would, that would be for a child. And then you look at the, the roles and the, and the students who show up on stage at our honors assembly in the spring. And the number of immigrant children that come through that, that award assembly with four points, going on to good universities. And that's, that's the success of this district. And as I say, it's one of the things I'm most proud of.
If I could add, the school district also has a longstanding relationship with Asia Services in Action, a local nonprofit. They don't just serve Asian populations, but they focus on not just English language learners, but also refugees. And so they have operated programs out of Emerson for a number of years to provide services, not just to students, but also to their families. And so I'll just add overall that I wouldn't be surprised if our numbers are dropping to the, for one of the reasons that Superintendent Nizwiki just noted, is that, given that the refugee families often are in rental housing, that the rental rates and prices are now not necessarily conforming to the support systems that exist. And so, or less so, let me say it that way. So indeed, we, we, we would just be mindful, that big picture, there would need to be housing available that could meet their needs and the rates, given that many of them get rental assistance for limited time periods because they need to enter the workforce and get other supports. And so the rent needs to be sustainable for those households and so many households in Lakewood. So.
Well, it breaks my heart because every time when, you know, if there's an apartment building in my ward where I've got tenants who call me and say, we got a note slipped under our door today that we all need to be out in 30 days. And we'll call the Lakewood Community Services Center, who's the city's partner for emergency housing solutions. And, you know, sometimes they're able to help, but there are times, you know, depending on the family's needs, where they'll say, I, I just know, we're, we're not going to be able to keep this family in Lakewood. There's just with the price point and the family's needs. And that, of course, also means that the kids are no longer going to be enrolled in our, our schools. So I know that the city is working in terms of the available parcels of land in the public domain. And as you see, we've got some projects in Birdtown and I think one on Wager Avenue, maybe. But also in some of the new apartment buildings that are going to be built, the ones at the two, Carlot, Spitzer, and Berry, both of those developers have committed in an agreement with the city that at least 20% of the units must be within the federal guidelines of low to moderate income affordability. So, other council members.
Mr., did you have your hand up? Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So this enrollment study, I'm interested in, I'm graduate, love schools, my kids are going to go there. And I'm sure it's going to be really in the data, right, like national trends, state trends, local trends. But I'm interested if, if it does get into, and I, I apologize if I did not read the 2013 enrollment study, but ways in which, within those margins of error, right, the, the, the school district can capture those families, right? Whether it be engaging young families, you know, and convincing them that staying in maybe a smaller house is better than going out further, or youth programming, athletics. That's where you really build that kind of camaraderie. So I'm curious if that goes into, or is it just straight stats?
I can tell you that majority of student demographic studies include the housing market, include those type of criteria that let them look at the total opportunities for families to stay or to leave. They look at, you know, the birth rates based upon the geographic area and understand those things and project those forward. You know, as, as was mentioned earlier, the overall census, you know, showed Lakewood did not lose overall total population, which is attributable to, you know, why Lakewood's a place to go and a place to be. However, again, as has been mentioned, the demographics of those families continues to change. You know, people are having children later, only one child versus eight. But yeah, no, they look at all, everything versus just the statistics. They do look at all those things.
Well, and on a policy standpoint, I mean, refugee, there are plenty of people in the world that I think would find a very happy, productive home in Lakewood. There, it's just hard to get into the country, let alone into the, our city. So we always welcome the energy that is brought to us by people with, that are not like us, don't necessarily look like us. And I would hope that national policy would change towards being a welcoming country because we're a welcoming city. And I, that's city and schools, I think.
Can I make one more?
Would do that.
I'm sorry. Quick, quick question, the, thank you, Madam President and Mr. President. The, can you just, Superintendent or whoever sent the information, can you repeat the timeframe of that study? It's going to take place from when to when and look at, it, it's a projection forward in time, is that right?
Certainly a projection. Yes, it's a projection forward, and I have not met with the consultant yet, so we don't even have the plan. It's just sharing that information with you that that is a study we'll be doing this next, during the springtime.
Okay, hopefully calendar 2022.
Our, yes, our goal would be to have that study completed by the beginning of the summer, midsummer, to be able to share that information out at, at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, and it, it's compelling. I mean, the value proposition to families of being in Lakewood, it, it's, it's just palpable coming out of your ears everywhere you look. But the, none of us control the housing market directly, even though that may not be the popular perception is that, you know, school board can do something the city can directly control. So that's a pressure. But, you know, if there are ways that we can all market, I, I don't know. Do we literally market the school system to our internal residents, to, you know, the full-throated feature? I know that communication certainly happens during school levies, but that's to your credit, your good work, only once in a few, you know, multiple years, and, and you do a good job of keeping that far apart. There's probably conversations that happen more rapidly, on a rapid timeframe. Maybe this is routine, it's, it's just not, my head isn't in this as much as yours.
I could say that, that just in the last few years, we've really tried to seek out that type of marketing you're discussing. So for example, sending our families that have potential three to five-year-olds, looking at that demographic and sending. at that demographic, and sending the postcard for preschool. We have opened a, well, we started opening it the year COVID hit, and had pretty good attendance, but we are full with a full-day preschool and adding another additional full-day preschool, knowing that many of our families want to start someplace and they'll continue with us in the school system, and so that's why we had started to ramp up that. So we specifically target certain age groups. We did the same with our virtual K- to five programming that we had. We knew some families really wanted that option, but we did not want them to go to a K- to 12 program out there someplace, and we wanted to continue with them as a Lakewood City School student, and so we specifically marketed those families that could have students in those areas to keep them here.
Mr. President?
Sure. Oh, I go right ahead, Nora, sir.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Baker said, and the opposite, at the opposite end of the spectrum from marketing to families is also keeping an eye on families who might be starting to struggle. And I think, you know, talking about what Ms. Kepel said about, you know, getting Lakewood alive at the table, also Lakewood Community Services Center, if they're starting to deliver meals to families that might not, might be new on their list, or if our family resource coordinators are suddenly having to refer families to services they might not have needed before, that could be sort of our early warning system that, hey, this family might be at risk of leaving. And are there ways we can get everybody talking to each other to give them support they need to keep them here?
Mr. President, this is an anecdote, really, but I wanted to talk briefly about our landlord training seminars and how I think those are a tool that have been utilized in order to encourage landlords to at least consider affordable housing options for their potential tenants. There's a lot of funds out there to even help with fixing up a place if it's been beaten up a little bit after the fact. It was also probably the most reliable form of rent income with eviction moratorium during the pandemic, and I think that's something that's missed in all this. It's sort of got a stigma about it, of course, and something to consider, but also, those meetings might be a really nice potential marketing opportunity for the schools, to actually have an agenda item for somebody from the schools to be able to attend and just simply talk to the landlords of Lakewood and tell them about what's going on in the schools and what they could be, you know, promoting to their potential tenants.
Good idea. Good idea. Okay. Superintendent, would you care to go on to the next item?
Sure, except for it's the update on foster pool renovation and...
Recreation department joint agreement.
Oh, so we already did the pool renovation one?
No, we didn't do...
Sorry about that. I've already checked that off my list, so we can just move on. I did. Done, okay. I'll turn off my mic now. I apologize, I'm losing it. So the recreation department and joint agreement, and so that was completed back in the summer, and we came back to the table to discuss the joint agreement. I feel as if we've had some great conversations, not only Mayor George and myself, but the joint committee that was put together with the city and different directors and the assistant superintendent within our department to discuss some of those agreements of properties and programming that we do together. I think this has been a great opportunity for us to really uncover some of the things that may have been working or may not have been working. It doesn't mean anything was broken necessarily, but boy, communication could get better, it always can from both ends. I say that to our staff all the time, you know, nobody likes feedback, but it certainly tells you something if you want to listen to it. And so I feel really confident that our team, our joint team, has grown to understand each other and what avenue they're coming towards when we're working on the city fields and the programming for recreation. That committee in itself in development also brought together a facilities committee that we started at the district level to bring our directors together to talk about different types of operations with recreation. And if you don't mind, I will just kind of pull in the new director position along with that. This has been, you know, something that Dr. Barnes and myself had discussed prior to him leaving, myself within overseeing recreation as the assistant superintendent, and now to this year, is we were beginning to see that we could be more efficient about how we ran recreation as a K- to, a pre-K to 12 educational institution. And there's not that many models out there, I believe we're only like the third in Ohio, that have recreation under its belt, so there's not like there's many models that you can turn around to say, "How effectively should you do this?" Over the years, I think the model has changed in the city schools, but what we needed to find ourselves doing is becoming very efficient, is ensuring that recreation was also in conversation with our operations department, with our fiscal department, and all together with our teaching and learning department. Educational programming should be in conjunction with, and there were conversations that were happening, but are those conversations also happening at a cabinet level? And so what we decided to, what I decided to do is put forth after our study of our organization model, it had actually probably less to do with what we were doing with the city at the time, but as an educational institution that has recreation underneath it, what are we doing to be efficient and to recognize the wants of our community as we continue moving forward? It's not the same as 10 years ago, you know, just as enrollment is different, the needs of our kids are different, the needs of our parents are different, and so it's timely enough for us to really delve back into looking at what does our community want out of the recreation program that is ours. And so we just have posted a position of a director of community and district activities, and there's a reason why it doesn't just say director of recreation. We have a coordinator of recreation, but we need a director of community and district activities. This person will lead and direct a comprehensive strategic planning process that articulates a clear, long-term philosophy and shared vision that fosters the relationships between the city recreation and education programming and district extracurricular programming and activities. And so we wanted to make sure that we weren't pigeonholing ourselves into a position that is really a brand-new position, that there's a roadmap ready to be planned for, not one that's already there. This job has never been there before. And so uniquely enough, these are the type of positions that I think you bring in a visionary leader to that can also communicate clearly to both constituents, can discuss clearly enough at a cabinet level with a director of operations, a director of teaching and learning, assistant superintendent, our treasurer, and everyone else that sits at the table, but also sees the bigger picture of the communication that has to occur at the city and community level, and what does that mean? So this person, we're not sure who this person is, but we're hoping that whoever comes to the table brings ideas and vision, because we don't know what it could look like, but we certainly want someone to come that has been a leader, a leader of adults too, in a way, that are able to build stakeholder engagement, and then also bring together certain groups of people that need to help us to continue to foster what we don't know, we haven't, or what we haven't done necessarily in recreation to date. So it's a unique position, we're excited about it. I know the position has closed, the application has closed, we don't have a date as of, yes, I believe next week we may start some of the, looking at the applicants and inviting people in for interviews. Know that our interview process goes to at least four, you know, three to four different events. Some people are very happy about that, but we really want to make sure that when you come back, you have the next level of information for us. I also asked Mayor George, and I'm very appreciative that we have asked that Mr. Story sit on the first level of interviews with us, because this person is, it's essential that they're able to communicate at all levels, and so we want to make sure that we have the city's engagement in that, our application process. Any questions?
I just, I have lots of questions, but in the interest of time, I'll keep into the top ones. Is this position based on a position you've seen elsewhere in some of the other school districts that incorporate community education and recreation? I know Orange does, Hudson does, some of the others in the area, do they have a similar position, or have you looked at other models?
I don't believe Orange has a cabinet-level position. I don't know of the other one. Specifically for us, I really feel that having someone that also understands the ins and outs of everyone else's position on the team helps us to engage more efficiently. And so it is going to be somebody who has been able to lead before, not, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be someone in recreation, it's just as if, you know, a teacher can become a director of curriculum instruction and they can become a superintendent, but they have to be able to lead adults, they have to be able to provide and communicate a vision and a mission and be able to move it forward. So as part of our qualifications, there were many leadership roles that we put in there, knowing that from our study, from our outside study that was done, it just, it will take a visionary leader that's willing to listen and communicate with others and continue to build on their skills.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I'm very excited about this position and the possibilities moving forward, and as well as the study, the ongoing work, so thank you for doing that work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent and school board members. This has been a topic of growing interest, and really always has been. It occurs to me that when schools are responsible for a budget crisis, such as the 2008, 9, 10, all the way through 12, property value bottoming out, and school levies and curriculum, and when cities are focused on core service personnel matters, or safety initiatives, or a major, you know, to name it directly, a major topic like the Lakewood Hospital, loss and redevelopment, those take the focus and eat up a lot of time and energy for all of us. In the meantime, recreation is, as I've come to, I don't know how else to say this, but I don't mean to say anything, it's not just recreation, it's a big deal, and perhaps hasn't gotten as much, at least my time, as it deserves over the years. So now I'm kind of in the position of trying to scramble to get mentally caught up and try to be a voice and a representative, and a user, because now I've got little kids who are going to go through the whole cycle of life, and it's wonderful and beautiful and exhausting, as Mike Callahan knows. So the, and so does others on this stage. So the, so thank you for, and thank you to the mayor and council also for clearing the decks, providing some focus, and what occurs to me is not just communication, it's planning and being thoughtful about the right plans and incorporating input from everybody. And everybody's got a little nugget of gold to share with the plan, and then us prioritizing it, and I hear the, I hear the financial directors here saying, "Oh geez, another demand on the budget," and our jobs are to say no and keep things balanced, and they do a good job of that. But the argument is that this is worth it, because if I heard school board member Kassenberger correctly, retention as much as intake of the students is part of the enrollment, and so if we can use recreation as a tool to keep and retain the families, and maybe it's not the families who have difficulty meeting escalating housing costs, but families with options, but we want to keep them here, it's those moments on weekend mornings or weeknights at practice where not just the kids, but the parents bond, and that can be a major feature, just like the schools do a fantastic job of the arts and music and everything else. So I guess I'd like to, as a citizen, because I'm not directly responsible for rec, to make the argument that youth programs ought to be the number-one priority for our time, energy, space, and those of us who are adults, you know, I can also go to the Y or the library or, you know, if push comes to shove, but when we have youth programming in the parks and in the programs, nine times, you know, nine out of 10 participants are going to be all local Lakewood. And that, I would like to suggest is the guiding criteria, criterion for how we prioritize, or one of them. And one last little, I guess there's no questions, a comment. Every time I turn around, there's another layer to this. The concession stand at Lakewood Park is another area of joint responsibility where we have, the city is contemplating a contract to run that, but half of the time or better is school, excuse me, pool employees that are rec employees, if I understand it correctly. And if we do a good job of improving operations of that tiny little but important concession stand, boy, does that really leverage the investments that we made in the playground at Lakewood Park and we're about to make in the pool side. And that's another area of joint coordination, because I don't know what the, you know, and we don't supervise or manage the pool employees. We could, and we do oversee the contract, but that's another area of potential need for coordination, so that the net result is the citizen and the school board, or the school-going family both get a beautiful, improved, ever-improving experience out of that park. I've talked too long. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. One of the, you know, when we decided that, when we were putting together the roadmap that came out from our consultant and overview of looking at different things moving forward, destination of athletics, academics, and recreation was part of our tagline for it, so that's what Lakewood could be. And so I agree with you that, you know, as we continue to pull things together, marketing that is important, because it is important to our young families. And sometimes when you have those little ones at home, you don't realize at all what's going on around you, because you're just living your life, you know, from the minute you get up to the time you get them in the bath and back to bed. And so it is important for us to continue to market what we have available.
Mr. President, thank you for this part of the discussion. I, previously being on council, I was the president at Winterhurst Hockey Association, and after two years of that promptly decided that real politics was far easier than sports and youth hockey politics. So it's important and poignant for you to be embracing this issue, because it's so important to, I think, the parents of today, maybe more than any generation, any generation previously. I do appreciate the olive branch of having Mr. Story participate in the interview process. I think that's important and healthy, as we try to work together moving forward. If I have a question, I think Councilman Bullock touched on it, it's this intersection of youth sports versus adult sports, and what's the priority? And I hope that as we move forward, that, you know, those youth sports, especially if they're resident-heavy, more resident-heavy, get the priority. I did learn, this is my last comment, that I get to, by virtue of this agreement, attend to attend the Crec meetings. The most recent one was on a Tuesday, and our council meeting was moved to Tuesday, so I wasn't able to attend, but the one previous to that, there was discussion about adult softball and it not being the moneymaker than that I thought it was, and that was a surprise. But nonetheless, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in those meetings and hope that our youth, our residents, are a priority moving forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As someone who stopped growing at this high rec, basketball was very important to me growing up, so do appreciate us looking into it. So I'm trying to, I do have a question, and maybe I'm not going to be able to express this well, but I hear talk about efficiencies, I hear about coordination. My question is, what are we hoping to see as a result of having this position? Are we hoping to see more youth enrollment in our sports, or are we looking to expand it, make it people more aware, reaching students and children where they are? What do we see as the result of having this position?
Sure, so I want to say yes. We're hoping to see all of that. I believe, though, the strategic plan will help flush most of that out when we look at the strategic plan just for recreation itself, community recreation and education. I hope to see coordination. I often picture, you know, when the Metro Park sends out their spring flyer, it has everything in there, so much more... everything in there. So much more of our communication, our recreation department would put together and sit with our teaching and learning department, but sometimes some of the teaching and learning department things that were occurring necessarily didn't occur in there because it was recreation. And that's how it was devised to happen. So it wasn't somebody wasn't doing something. But really, if I'm a parent, I'm a parent of four, I want to look at one place for things because that's all the time I have. And I'm going to look in April because I need someone to take care of my kids this summer. And so there's certain things that we can do better as an organization. And that means all the directors need to be on the same page with it to ensure that they're feeding into that, let's just talk about program guide for a minute, the program guide for summertime. And what does that mean? That also then hits in Director of Operations Court of what can we do as a school district to ensure that certain things aren't occurring in the building? So for example, as operations moving forward, all of our rooms are getting cleaned, the floors are getting cleaned, and then all of a sudden we might have programming that might have to happen. So that's going to allow us on the organization end, you probably didn't even need to know any of that, but on our end, that helps us to be more efficient. In the same time, we want to ask our community, what is it that our kids, our little ones, that you want your little ones engaged in, you know, from the early ages? But really, recreation and education goes to 99 and above. And so are there areas that our community would like saying, you know what, we do want a little bit more, I believe in the youth sports, absolutely, I believe in the youth education, but it's community recreation and education for all. And so is there an area that we can engage our other constituents throughout the district, throughout our community, to engage in some work with them?
Can I, can I, can I comment? As a board member, when we started talking about this position, my thought was, I want to see this person oversee the quality in our programs, not just programs as we have them, but what's the best we can be. And that means things like articulating programs so that when we look at, and this is part of the, I think, the retention of students, when we look at our recreation program, say basketball, that we start with the little guys down here and even preschool, and we have an articulated program all the way through varsity. That means we coordinate travel programs, we coordinate coaches, we have training programs. And we also need a link from that to quality education. Because frankly, I vote for sports because it improves the quality of the academic performance of our kids. And so I want somebody who can talk to teaching and learning, who can look at remediation for students who aren't qualified, can't make it on the team for whatever, you know, and how do we increase the successful involvement of all of our students in athletic and recreation programs? So there's a lot to this, I think philosophically, along with the, what Superintendent Miss Wiki said, that means, it's a, it's a, it's a part of the strategic plan of the district and of improving the quality of the services we offer students, you know, all around. We have a lot of kids, and you've seen this, I'm sure every one of you, we have a lot of kids who don't get on the football team because, guess what, they don't have the grades. They don't qualify. They don't count, in a way. And, and one of the things that, it's a hobby horse, I guess I'm riding, but I think recreation and school athletics are there to support in large part the academic success of students. Or I guess for that rare kid that's going to play football for the Browns in 30 years or 20 years from now, you know, we need to make sure he gets the best quality of programming that he can have too.
If I could just jump in, one, one other thing. I guess I wanted to just tack on from what Superintendent Miss Wiki said is that this, this is our community's way of connecting with most people in Lakewood because most people in Lakewood are not enrolled in the Lakewood City schools. And so, big picture, while the prioritization may be different or change, is ultimately, just like the city, of course, we, we have public spaces that have a, an intended use, but have other uses that, you know, outside of the school day could be there. And then to provide programming and, and other opportunity that works sort of symbiotically, I guess, connecting the space, the people, and what's provided, is that this sort of position can help align all of those competing needs and really focus on what our community wants and what they need and what we can do in the spaces. That we've all, thank goodness for the community, we've all supported in the recent years to make sure that they exist. I'll of course note that we have a great fitness facility, a very affordable one for residents of the city to, to come. And I welcome, of course, any, if you guys haven't used it yet, to come by because it's, it's that sort of thing to be able to use a public space in a way that might meet the needs of the community, but in an affordable manner. And so recognizing that there is an absolute place for the for-profits and other nonprofits out there who provide other types of programming, but indeed, this is where we want to just make sure we're meeting the needs of the zeros to the 100-plus age throughout our community. So.
Did you have something, John?
Yes, I believe Councilman Baker.
Oh, go ahead.
So I applaud the district for taking this step. And, you know, being someone who played youth athletics in Lakewood and then went on to play at the high school as well, and I understand this position is more than that, right? It's not, we tend to be focused on the recreation side, but it's more than that. I'm curious, because it seems to be, and it was when I was a student as well, right, there's a little bit of a disconnect between like the rec program as it goes into the high school, right, as you get into kind of like when sports become a little bit more serious, right? To Dr. Beebe's point, right? It's, you know, the, you know, Chakner, right, he stopped growing. So, you know, he wasn't going to make the basketball team, but he wanted to play rec. So it seemed to be that the handoff there, he's a great shooter, I'm kidding. But, but, so, and I'm, the question's going to get in the weeds a little bit where it seems to be that's always been kind of a clunky wedding, right? And I think a little bit of it is, is reporting structure. So I'm interested in this position, whether the strategic plan is going to inform reporting structure and direct reports, or is that kind of already decided? Because I know the AD, right, reports to high school principal, and then the community record coordinator reports to superintendent now. Is it that them and others will be reporting to this position? So just curious if you could talk about kind of how you see this position fitting in the existing structure.
Yeah, great question. Absolutely. So this position will oversee athletics, recreation, and civic. The civic is something that we would also like to utilize to its fullest. We have people in there that are more than capable of assisting with that, but we need somebody to oversee and kind of manage the thought process of that because, you know, the people that are in those jobs also have full-time jobs too, so it would help to vision and what it is we'd like to see out of our civic center. And we've had a great number of conversations over the years that the people helping to run those would like to see that too. And possibly we've had that in the past here in Lakewood. And so yes, the athletic director position would also be in conjunction with the high school principal, but this, this role would evaluate that position. Does that make sense?
So the AD is still going to report through the principal to this position, or?
No, but the evaluation process will be in tandem. So the AD will report to this position, but the evaluation process based off of a school evaluation process will be in conjunction with Mr. Walter.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman.
Thank you. And I just want to touch back. I think sometimes in our conversation, we've talked a lot about sports and athletics and recreation. And I, I just, and full disclosure, I do have a little bit of a bias towards the non-athletic part of this, since that's what I do for a living. But, but, you know, we have students, and to Councilmember Litten's point, going to the advisory council meeting. And I'm so excited to see the strategic plan work because I think that's so crucial. You know, there was a conversation, I got the opportunity to go to one of those. What is the point, you know, of the rec sports? Is it, is it building, is it building the future team? Is it providing, is it providing physical fitness? Is it something in between? Is it both? And those types of questions are the types of questions when we're talking about, so we're not just counting outputs, we're not just saying we had this many bodies attending, we got this much money from these many kids. We're talking about what are the outcomes we're achieving that we, these students, you know, and talking to some community basketball advocate, I'll mention Randy right now, but is, you know, with our girls' basketball program goes down at a certain age. That's about the time when girls start feeling really bad about themselves physically. That's about the time they start losing confidence. So what are some of the things in place? Maybe the point, you know, so anyway, to go to all that of what are the outcomes. So I'm really excited about the strategic plan work. And I know, obviously, we care a lot about the youth element and to some of my colleagues' points about focusing on that. But I do just want to mention that, you know, we talk about, we have this great fitness center that's more affordable, but it does have a cost, right? And, and these programs have a cost. And so that's something to be thinking about too. As a technology educator, you know, I have a lot of seniors who want to participate in programs. We have a lot of kids that are not necessarily athletic-focused and how those education programs tie into the curriculum, as you mentioned, but tie in beyond that. And, and so I'm excited to see this work and what kind of outcomes we're looking at. That vision of a Lakewood graduate, what's the vision of a Lakewood community education? And last point on this, although I could go on for a long time, is, is what type of conversation there might be with Lakewood Library coming, you know, and what, how that ties into their educational offerings and programming also.
Excellent. Thank you. I think there's plenty of opportunity to continue the conversations. And I, I'm a person that actually likes not seeing the road ahead and be, I think you build a better, you know, not to be corny, but a better tomorrow when you don't necessarily see the road ahead and just listen to what others want around you. They might have some expertise and be able to, you know, build something better. So.
The, uh...
Allow me to be the last comment between us and pool.
Talk?
The pride of Winterhurst.
Yes.
Okay. It seems like the form to ask it because the joint agreement had so much to do with this fact, and I'm asking it into the ether, I suppose. But weather notwithstanding, because we've had an interesting winter, are we on target for May 1st for these fields to get, to get ready, to get completed, the two that were getting renovated this year?
The track is scheduled, but I did see the number update. So they are set to set in the month of March. Due to some delays in the fall, they estimated the completion is May 1st for all fields. But sorry, I committed to recreation, which is also pending weather delays.
Right.
Obviously, it's about a very wet winter. Hopefully, you know, the ground, the odds are that they can get to work, but we're, we're May 1st.
Is that work being done in-house or are we having?
The post-sports is...
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Could I add something quickly? I know we said Mr. Bullock would be the last.
I almost got it.
At the risk of belaboring the point.
That's probably why I already checked it off.
I thought John had the last word.
I know. I tried.
On that side.
Again, at the risk of belaboring, as a park and recreation professional, I'm thrilled that this topic received this much airtime. And so I thank everyone for all, all of the, of the comments. This is a quality of life opportunity and economic development opportunity. Mrs. Beebe talked about basketball just as an example, and I want to add to that point about consistency across all sports and all activities and bring in music and, and to Ms. Keppel's point, to, to other activities that encompass that broad umbrella that is, that is, that is recreation. And I couldn't be more thrilled about this, this position. And one, one quote that the superintendent used, that visionary leader piece, I certainly am excited about, about the position and that, and that type of leader being in this role. So thank you. Don't want to hold things up further.
Thank you for your brevity and your comments.
I think we're on to the pool renovations. I don't know if Director Lineiger would like to queue that up.
Good evening again. And to Mr. Callahan's point, when we talk about parks and we talk about Lakewood Park, our, our, our most pristine park, our, really our gold standard for how we do things, we talk about Foster Pool. So if you're wondering where Foster Pool was built in 1953, and I'm going to also condense this down in the interest of time. It was built in 1953, so today it's sitting there at 69 years old. It was last renovated in the mid-1980s, but it is in desperate need of renovation. Right now, we are losing about a million gallons a season out of the pool. The hydraulic floor that's in there doesn't operate anymore. The amenities that are in there aren't aligned with a lot of the, the planning studies that we've had over the years, going back to 2001, when we completed a master plan for Lakewood Park and first started to think about what the next generation of this facility is going to look like, and bringing in some of the more modern and family amenities that we see in some of our peer communities around, around the region. So, that being said, this isn't the first time we've talked about Foster Pool. It's been on our radar for some time. Most recently, in 2001, as part of the master plan, again in 2015, 16, with the active living task force that talked about not just Foster Pool, but pools in general, and how do we create facilities for all ages and all abilities? And that's really what we're trying to do as part of this, this, this project here. Since 2015, obviously, when Mayor George made this a priority of hers to queue this up and get this moving forward, council authorized the funding as part of the, originally as part of the last year's budget to start the design process. We kicked off with a series of public involvement, public surveys. We went out twice with, with looking for community input. Twice, we broke our, at least a city's record for responses. And a lot of the details are in the, in the handout I gave you, as far as what those responses were. I think the first one was over 866 responses. The next one was over 1,000 responses. What we learned through that process is that Lake, that Foster Pool is an incredibly valuable resource to the community and is worthy of being reinvested in. We also learned how the committee wants to reinvest in that. And then from there, we went and developed, we hired Sixmo as our consultant and also go backwards a little bit and say thank you to the Recreation Department of Schools for being our partner alongside of all of this, participating in all of our project meetings, offering feedback, even as soon as today, continuing to get some feedback on, on some different components of this. But moving forward into, then we took some of those designs, hired Sixmo, put together initial design, and had a series of open houses. We had two open houses. We continued to collect feedback and to refine the plan. Ultimately, where we ended up after those two open houses on the bottom of page eight, and then a little bit more detailed, at least from a bird's eye perspective, on the top of page nine, is where we, where we are today. The page nine is where we, where we are today. Really, it's a balance of, on one hand, we heard competition and, and having the ability to have competitive events and maintain that competitive nature of the pool is incredibly important to the community. On the other hand, we heard having those recreational amenities, those splash pads, those amenities, those slides, those other things are really important to the community too. And sometimes those things don't necessarily work very well together. So we had the tug and pull and move some things around as part of this, this proposal, at least where we are today. So what we've arrived at is a little bit of a modified shape of the existing pool, but we still maintain 10, 25-yard lanes. We still maintain 650-yard, 50-meter lanes. But we also then are able to add a second pool as well as a splash pad sitting on the north end of the site near, near, near the playground. But we're also at a second pool that then offers basically a revamped kiddie pool with zero-depth entry, again, all ages, all abilities, has some of the splash features, also has some quiet areas. So sometimes people, when they get in the pool, don't want to get splashed. But that happens. And so we created some quiet areas for people to get in. We had the slide amenities. We maintained a diving board and really tried to create something that then also has opportunities for swim lessons, has opportunities to support senior recreation. A lot of our seniors, we heard, like to get in the pool and walk around. So we had a very specific conversation about the depth of the main pool. Originally, it was shown at four feet, but four feet isn't very comfortable for, for young children, isn't very comfortable for some seniors. So 3.6 was kind of the happy medium to, to allow for still competitive swim to take place back and forth, but also create a place where, where seniors and our, and our new swimmers can go and feel comfortable and learn to swim. So this is where we're at. We've had a couple of public meetings since that color rendering is really starting to show some of the color palette that we're, we're thinking about with the pool. We've had a meeting with our planning commissioner, ADR, which kind of wrapped up our, our public comment portion. We got some really good feedback even from that meeting, so we're, we're still thinking about the splash pad a little bit and how that's configured, how it's oriented and better engages with the park to the north. You can see that, that bottom site climate, it's the last image on that page, is, is kind of where we are. So. we are. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to ask, since we've had and will continue to have ample opportunity to address this, that council members hold their questions for Director Lininger, but certainly would welcome any comments or questions from the school board.
Well, I guess I'll just say that I really appreciate the city's process with this. I recognize it takes a little longer, but the fact that we've gone through just even the various visions and then the images of what this space could be, I think in the end, as a community, will end up with a much better alignment with where we want to be, even if it takes a little while. I recognize running those sessions, long days, all those other things and getting in the comments, especially when it's competing comments where we don't arrive. I do just appreciate the attention and the focus on just on getting us there. As a former competitive swimmer and a former swimming coach, I also just want to just say thank you again for maintaining that legacy and really the future for our future swimmers too, of ensuring that our community still has access to the Olympic distance, which is necessary for training. I recognize there's probably fewer swimmers out there than there may have been back in '53 when we got this first version going, but just knowing that we'll still be able to do that and then still have these other things in partnership, I think is just, it's really great for our community all in all. And just so grateful overall that we're doing this because acknowledging that we have facilities and that we've operated that are over 100 years old, the fact that we are now further away from when those mid-'80s developments or rehabs were done is just amazing to me because this pool has lasted as long as it has. So, but indeed, thank you, and I'm just looking forward to when this becomes reality.
Thank you.
Where are you at as far as the timeline now? Could you give us an idea of what your timeline is projected?
Absolutely. So we are wrapping up our design development, and so there's really three phases, design developments, contract development, and then construction documents. We are trying to get construction documents here later this spring with the goal of bidding the project this spring. We'd have our regular swim season, as we do every year. Then once this 2022 season ends, the contractor would be selected and move in, start their construction, do as much work as they can in the fall. There is some work that they can do in the winter as well because it does include the bath house and some of the facilities. When the weather breaks in the spring, they'd hit the site again and wrap up any final things with the plan to make every best effort that we can to be done when the pool opens for the season in '23.
Wow. That's impressive.
So hopefully, it's a lot of work to get there with some really good weather on the way, but we can do it.
I think your outline, you know, from the beginning to the end, has just shown exactly why it is so important to engage others in the conversation. You did an excellent job, and it's exciting to see what's going to be here in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could, this is an amazing investment, someone who worked there for years and has brings my children there, and it's highly anticipated. And I commend you for, as we've talked about in recreation thus far, it really is an age, lifelong, you know, continuum, and the opportunity for folks to, at any age, to enjoy this and to really have a maximum benefit will just, I think, attract and retain residents. I know that there is a group of folks that remember and cherish the very large swim meet that was once held annually, an international event, and speak to the number of lanes of being six, long course versus eight, as being somewhat limiting to that type of event. I know that they've voiced the concerns with you. I'm just curious as to the response there, and are we likely to remain in this format? Is this what we're going to see? And would you care to comment on that six versus eight lane?
Yes, so the format that you see here is generally the format that we will be in with the six versus the eight and then the 10 on the 25-yard.
Right.
And so, yes, we did hear very early on when we had that first open house, you can see in the first plan that we came to that open house with only had a 25-yard pool. We then went back and tried to, what this all became is this entire process had been about balance. And so then we went back to the drawing board and said, oh, we heard very clearly that 50 meters is very important to a portion of our community.
Right.
How can we bring that in? Yes, our initial effort was to try and bring it all the way back in, eight lanes with the 25-yard. However, what we ended up in is we ended up in some pinch points. When we reduced down some of the family amenities from that original plan, the scale of those, we took some out. But ultimately, where we left off is we simply didn't have enough room within the existing footprint of the pool. And there's also not easy opportunities to expand the pool footprint beyond where it is because to the east, we have a parking lot, to the north, we have playground, to the south, we have building as well as baseball field. So and then we have also, then, tennis courts off to the side. Also, when you start to change some of those distances, the scale and the cost factors of the pool start to change significantly. So ultimately, we, there's also some state law that dictates how much pool surface you have to have versus deck area.
Right.
So taking all of those things into consideration, the balance point was, hey, we can get the six. We had also heard during the public comment that, hey, we'd like to have eight, that would be perfect, but at a minimum, we need six. And so that was kind of the, that was kind of that balancing point through the entire process.
Thank you. Thanks for addressing the question.
President?
Counselor.
Yes. This is actually, sorry, Director Lininger. But for, actually, this might come from the question for the school board, but I'm going to go through you. But, so I actually just saw some friends on Facebook that their kids were in swim meets at the Lakewood High School pool, and so I just wondered, is the school, the Lakewood High School pool, is it eight lanes or how many lanes? I don't know anything about competitive swimming. Do you have to have eight lanes?
So, no, you don't. Big picture, it's the more swimmers you could have in competition. And so Lakewood High School is a 25-yard pool of eight lanes and a separate diving bay. And so that big meet that they used to talk about where we did get, I mean, it was thousands, hundreds of swimmers, maybe thousands, but coming in from Canada and from all over, it was partly because Foster Pool was large enough to accommodate those sorts of meets. When you're doing, in the summer, you do 50 meters, which is the same distance that they do in the Olympics. Every event takes longer, so you need more space. And so ultimately, you have to cut down the number of events you have, the fewer lanes you have. But six, six lanes is a competition pool. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, environmental projects. Is that ours?
I believe that's ours.
Okay.
It's not mine.
But if Mr. O'Malley would like to chime in, he's more than welcome.
Just wanted to share that we have been looking at a couple of different environmental projects as the city has too. We have put in a battery station up at the, across from the high school for charging of cars. And we are also continuing to look at different solar opportunities, as the city has, with some of their buildings around. At this point in time, we don't have too much further information unless Director of Operations wanted to share where we were at with the solar.
Good evening again. To give everyone an update, over spring break, which starts March 14th, the contractor that worked with the city years ago on the solar panels on some city roofs will be engaged in Lakewood City schools. There are four roofs that are into their sixth year. Those have been identified for that contractor to assess the condition of the roofs and review the electrical bills associated with those buildings to see if it is feasible and a good economic decision with other factors for us to consider whether or not we continue with the solar panel project. Any questions regarding that project? We've got three new elementaries in the east side of the high school are being looked at. I also asked for that contractor to look at the north field to see if any of the land plot there would be suitable for field-based panels, as well as a stretch on the north side of Grant. So...
Well, I think that's terrific and certainly hope that it works out. The city of Lakewood, under Mayor Summers and Mayor George, have made significant investments in solar power with outfitting numerous city buildings with the solar panels. As I think many folks know, we also have made available, I don't know how many we're up to at this point, electric vehicle chargers. What is it, seven, Tom? Seven. And Winterhurst, of course, is the supercharger, and I think we're going to have a second supercharger in the city center plaza, possibly, right? And the level-two chargers are throughout the city at the parks, and we've got one on the west end in Detroit Extension, and there's several others throughout. And of course, this is something that council's very committed to. Councilmembers Bullock and Raider have really taken the lead on this over the last few years, but I'm sure I speak for everyone on council in our commitment. We actually now have a standing committee that is specifically tasked with addressing sustainability issues on council. So certainly commend everything that you've outlined here in terms of where the schools are headed and the investments you're making.
Well, the electric charging is actually a kudos to the city planning department. They made it very easy for me to participate, and it makes sense. If you're familiar with the north parking lot at the high school, the location is going to be in the southwest corner. And, yeah, it's exciting to see and willing to be a participant in that program.
Great.
Any questions from the board?
I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention that even within our fleet in the city, we've made some investments, including Chief Kowchak. We've got a couple of electric police vehicles as well, don't we? Hybrid. Okay. Well, still great.
So we're considering electrical elements into our sidewalk so that we can get rid of our snow blowers in our assaulting operation. Thank you.
Now, that's, Mr. President, just briefly, I want to thank the service director and the school leadership for, you know, this potential partnership. The city, of course, has been going step by step, and we're still kind of learning as we go. Councilman Raider led the way, and we're into implementation of a plan to take a comprehensive audit, as it were, of our environmental impacts and then plan and triage and prioritize and kind of have a series of action steps. Survey work is going to be underway this year. I don't know if, does it capture, it captures the whole community. I don't know if it captures school buildings or not, but maybe there's some, you know, insights that the city's plan could provide. But I'll just share, you know, as a citizen, as a voter, as somebody who contributes to property taxes, I love the fact that our institutions like a library, like our city and our schools are not only doing a good job with their core mission of curriculum, of city services, of library, you know, knowledge banking, but are also paying attention to what comes next. So clean air impacts, teaching innovation, demonstrating our values, you know, those are all things to me that are signs of institutions I want to support in the community that I'm proud to be in, passionate to stay in, you know? And every time I meet somebody from Rocket River, I'm like, yeah, but you know what Lakewood's doing, Lakewood's doing. You guys should be green with envy that you're not in Lakewood. And they laugh and say, you know, well, they give me their commentary. But anyway, I think you're going in the right direction when we look to how our everyday investments, we're already spending on the lights, we're already spending on the vehicles. If we can make those smarter, more efficient, and healthier, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, and just to follow up on that, I think, you know, as the leadership and the grownups in the room, we often try and, you know, lead the way in these topics, but environmental concerns are, there are a lot of our students who are really passionate about these subjects and these efforts, and so I think involving them in the conversation is really important. They're usually not shy about being part of the conversation and anything, but I think, you know, they see that as their future. So I think the schools specifically have an important role in this to lead the way and partner with the city. So I think it's a great opportunity for that, too.
Thank you.
Well, we have concluded our lengthy list of agenda items of mutual interest, and so I would say we will move to, do we each need to adjourn since?
I just very quickly want to acknowledge, because the mayor acknowledged, the members of the administration, our council staff, our clerk, Maureen Bach, who's a Lakewood resident as well, and Nick Glasgow, who's our deputy clerk. And of course, just again, want to thank you. I was looking through my email at the last time we did this, and it was, Emma and I were talking about doing this in mid-March 2020, and of course, we know what happened to those plans. And so, you know, since I think the last time we met, we've got three new council members and two new board members, and really looking forward to a continued positive relationship.
I think that's excellent. I think all these conversations, we learned maybe a shorter agenda and more information, but definitely the enrollment issues, other issues that are, I mean, we're inseparable in talking about those and having a vibrant community. So definitely, we'll do another one whenever we need it. It doesn't have to be on a timeframe. We will each do our own motions of adjournment, right?
Sure. I'll move to adjourn city council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, signed by Vice President Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone who came. We appreciated it.
Thank you.
Great conversation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.